I don't disagree with you. That guy's a jerk, though. No, he wouldn't. Not me. I'll show you the social media posts to prove you otherwise. Okay, I'm gonna have you announce the speaker. You announce the speaker. Oh, Flashly, you're in trouble. Oh, not Flashly, Posey. Is Posey here?
That was out of the way.
It's not even...
Ah, she's getting there, she's getting there. Better than she was. Yeah, we're getting back on track.
It's Ethan Posey. Oh, this one. Oh, look at... Oh, Jim, this is the Capitol, huh?
Yeah.
I thought Ethan was gonna be here and he was gonna compare ties with Ralph and Jim, and Jim's not wearing a tie, so... We will see. Pardon me?
Just counting heads.
What'd you say? Is Lakeisha out of town? Yeah, Aaron's here. So you're full over here, and you'll have two gone here, so you'll have eight. You'll have eight. Two minutes, Alderman. Posey thought you'd be in a tie tonight. He thinks he's in this, like, tie race with you.
He is, but he usually loses. Where is he?
He thinks he's in a tie race with you.
Test, test, test. Doesn't work. Can anybody hear me?
I wanna know who was in my chair last night.
It was me.
Whoever this is, I'm gonna kill him because they're gonna, they're gonna kill me one of these days.
Do they put it in their word?
I'm just gonna go over the back rail.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Okay. The August 6, 2025, meeting of the City Council is called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Redpath, can you please call the roll?
Alderman Cox?
Here.
Alderman Gregory?
Here.
Alderman Williams?
Here.
Alderman Rockford? Alderman Purchase? Alderman Autriano?
Here.
Alderman Carlson?
Here.
Alderman Conley?
Present.
Alderman Donlin?
Here.
Alderman Hanauer?
Here.
Mayor Buscher?
Present.
Thank you, clerk. The civility pledge, in the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. This evening, there are no proclamations or presentations to come before the council. The Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the July 15, 2025, regular City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved, mayor.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion say yes.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the first read? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. That almost sounded like Tony. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with eight voting yes, none voting no. Agenda items number 2025-247 and 2025-288, 281, sorry, remain tabled or in committee. The next item on the agenda is item number 2025-337, an ordinance approving the final plat for the redivision of Lot 41 of the redivision of part of Lot 41 of Legacy Point Town Center Phase 5. Docket number 2006-054 for the Office of Public Works for Emergency Passage. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda item number 2025-337 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on item 2025-337? No discussion. I know you got an email from Chief City Engineer Bottom on this. Then the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with nine voting yes, none voting no. Is there any unfinished business from the council to come before the council? Seeing none, is there any new business to come before the council? Before I call on you, Alderman Carlson, I just wanna remind everyone that the Illinois State Fair starts tomorrow with a parade, and it will be in town for 10 days. And if you haven't had the opportunity, I think you should go out and look at the improvements at the fairgrounds. Our governor has really made a big commitment to this fairgrounds and this community, and we owe him a big thank you for that, so go see them. Alderman Carlson?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanna say that tonight, there was a vehicle accident in my ward, and there were a number of, a number of homes without electricity. I sat outside on my deck for three hours. But I wanna thank, first of all, Doug Brown. I was in communication with him all night, as well as Amber Saven, so I just publicly wanna thank them for their quick response. I think finally, the electricity was back on for a few homes, and Christ the King at, at 10:00 the next morning, but I know they, they worked all night, but more to the point, it was just good communication from them. And then obviously, I wanna thank the, the police as well. Whoever hit, you know, the vehicle hit the pole, knocked it down, and then I think one or two of them ran off, and I think they caught them probably 15, 20 minutes, so I just wanna acknowledge that.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you very much. Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I do wanna thank Doug Brown and Amber and the staff. They sent out a report to us that compared our rates to Ameren. And the big, the big difference is we generate our own power. And the difference in that per month is 175 dollars. I don't have it in front of me. 175 for a CWLP customer, and for an Ameren customer, it's over 400. You know, we, we talk about, it, we talk about the importance of, of our utility and how important it is to the ratepayers. And just think, if we, when it goes away, we're gonna be stuck in the same boat that Ameren is because we won't be generating our own, our own power. And so you look at what the difference of it is for an average household, and it's substantial. So I appreciate them getting that to us, and, you know, I, I shared it. But that's, that's good things to have, to show the importance of our utility, so thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. I appreciate it. Any other new business from any Alders? Okay, seeing none. Clerk, it will be citizens signed up in advance to address the council?
Lisa Irving?
Hello. I apologize, this is my first time here. I come before you today as a six-year resident of Harvard Park, Ward 2. My reason for addressing the council today is to discuss the current rules regarding the boulevards in Springfield. Small explanation as to how I got here. I recently had the pleasure of meeting and talking with my next-door neighbors. I'm sure, as you know, good neighbors are hard to come by, so I'm very blessed to have such pleasant neighbors. I found myself stopping every so often to talk to them, and can say their presence in the last few months has been a highlight of my six years living in Ward 2. That being said, I noticed a post about their tomato garden earlier in July. They moved to Harvard Park from a third of an acre lot into a small 5,000-square-foot lot in Harvard Park. Yard space is a bit of a luxury and can be sparse. Their lovely dog, Cause, needs space to run, so they've had to give up their dreams of continuing their large garden, instead planting in very small planters in their backyard. I offered up my portion of the boulevard to allow them to plant their garden when they advised me that they could not plant on the boulevard. After calling the city to confirm, I was advised, due to possible erosion and potential for wild animals, that planting on the boulevards was not allowed. Not sure if those who wrote the code know, but Harvard Park is plagued by squirrels, so I don't think the banning of the garden or fruit trees has had much of an impact on their... Sorry, on their population. I can't speak to erosion, 'cause I'm not a geomorphologist, but I don't believe that such a small, stale garden throughout the city of Springfield would severely impact the soil's integrity, instead maybe even increasing it as citizens tend their gardens and replenish the soil as needed. I don't believe the benefits would stop there, however, as it would also help our much-needed native pollinators, which in turn helps another member of Harvard Park as she tends bees and sells their honey. I do believe that utilizing these boulevards to their full, full potential would be an immeasurable benefit, and the lack of autonomy is especially frustrating as we are still expected to maintain these boulevards unless we want to be fined, which does not seem terribly fair. So I'm asking that we please reconsider amending these codes to allow for the planting of fruit trees or fruit plants and vegetables on our boulevards, which I believe would greatly improve the quality of life of Springfield residents and, or at the very least, not hold citizens accountable for maintaining those boulevards. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. James Johnson? James Johnson? Ken Pasha?
Please allow me just one second. Is there a reason we're not broadcasting tonight? We just give up the livestream? All these facilities, all this money, we just can't get the cameras to work? This is a public hearing. What exactly is happening here? It's already a joke that it took me longer to get out of the shower than it did to run the entire City Council meeting tonight. That's seven pages. Save a tree, guys. I'll represent the Lorax tonight. What is that? Like, that's an absolute joke, man. There's actually stuff to discuss on there, and you guys just what, did it all behind closed doors? I mean, are you guys interested in wasting all our time? 'Cause that's what it feels like. That's a waste of our time. You're not even streaming tonight. Do you think people don't watch? I know you know they watch. So where's the cameras? Why no notice that we won't be streaming tonight? Isn't that the least bit unprofessional? A little bit amateurish? I mean, at a certain point, this city looks bad. I don't know if you guys get that. You guys think I'm just some jerk who comes up here, but like, we talk to people outside of here, and they're not impressed by the behavior of this council and the way things are handled. Whether it be the cameras, our language, banning people for 30, 60, 90, 120, whatever number we wanna pull out. I mean, this is embarrassing. And then the things I've been talking about, like an actual landlord registry, I've got words. Some of the members of council think we should only put the bad landlords on there. Is that a joke? How do you think accountability works? You just wait till somebody does something bad, and then you start paying attention and figuring out what rule you can find to get your way out of it? Like we did last week with that guy's water line? What kinda engineer knows that ordinance right off the bat, 5.019CB? You know why he knows it? 'Cause it's been used multiple times to deny citizens their right to repair from city damage. And I think that's the deranged part, is we're real sticklers on the rules. We're real worried about how other people act. But when it's something important, like actually broadcasting your City Council meeting to your own citizens, you guys either don't know it's not happening, or you don't care. I mean, you guys have lost a considerable amount of leadership in this administration. HR directors, Office of Economic Development, fire chief, police chief. Where'd our city planner go? You guys paying them that poorly? It didn't even take 65K from the state to get them out of here? I mean, I'll tell you what it looks like. It's like rats fleeing a sinking ship. Because I'll tell you, the administration and the behavior of this city is getting embarrassing, downright. I've had reporters from other places reach out to me and ask me what exactly is going on here. That you guys can't even get basic things done. That as a capital city, other cities in Illinois eclipse you in terms of policy, ordinances, follow-up, and just general expectation of how you treat your own citizens and their worries. I got two more minutes, but I, I don't even feel like I wanna use them, because why bother? I mean, quite frankly, some of the actions that have even been taken, as I said last week, lack the bite to make anybody even feel the pain of it. We have another round of money coming from cannabis grants that denied how many owners? We don't know. Where's the public list of that? It's just frustrating that yet again, yet again, we have another round of that money going out. And how many businesses didn't get it? How many great people you work with didn't get it, Sean? How many people, yet again, think that the city doesn't care about them? How many people look around downtown and wonder how many more businesses are gonna close during that time these streets are blocked off? And I understand work's gotta be done, but where's the notice? Business owners didn't even know that was happening. How poorly coordinated are we that we're gonna shut down entire thoroughfares in our downtown, and the owners are unaware of that behavior? Is that poor communication? Is it a lack of interest in letting them know? Is it, well, they'll just deal with it? I mean, it's frustrating over and over and over again. I haven't missed a council in months. And I'm sure, to some people's chagrin, that, that I keep showing up. But I'll tell you quite frankly, with the number of people that reach out to me with their concerns, that I help go to 186, that I'm trying to get to come here and to come to county, man, if I can get it to happen, you guys are never gonna hear the end of it. I'm dead serious. Like, that guy with the water main, we had five more people reach out about that. That's not an uncommon issue, and it seems kinda strange it keeps popping up, right? But let's wait till it gets so large, it becomes a class action, right? Let's wait until we have 20 people here yelling at you about it, until you acknowledge that the issue even exists. When are we gonna actually see some real, concrete action that isn't a, a backdoor to make people on the east side beg for money? Or let developers run rampant with their development with very little restrictions? It's just embarrassing.
Thank you.
Caleb McGuire?
They'll come around and get it for you. Yeah, absolutely. Joanne will be right there, ma'am.
All right, I'll go ahead and get started. Good evening, everyone. Before I start, I am sorry if I'm shaky, sorry if I'm a little mad. I'm very frustrated, the fact that we're not streaming, 'cause that's... Kinda whole point of me coming up is to spread the word to the community, but... That's now why I'm here. I'm coming as a concerned citizen. After our recent scare of thinking Ms. Brianna Eilers was missing and seeing how quickly our community can communicate to find someone, I'm asking the entire city of Springfield to help find Jeriah Hummels. Ms. Hummels has been missing since late June from the Ward 2 area, specifically 2841 Stanton Street. After a fight with her biological mother, who she was spending a year to connect with, Ms. Hummels left the house and never came back. Her biological mother only told her mother in Chicago, Stephanie Robinson, the woman who raised her since the age of three, that Ms. Hummels was missing after she had already been gone for almost a month. Her biological mother also won't let her come back home. Immediately, Ms. Robinson reported her missing in Springfield and started spreading the word. This young girl has been seen in local shelters, vacant homes, and potentially in a car with a strange man. I have emailed all of the Alder persons the missing person poster I made. I was only able to print five full-size posters, and I would have already given them to Alderman Gregory and Alderman Williams, as they are her aldermen and her immediate neighboring aldermen, if you wanna share them, of course. If they were cheaper, I would've made more, but I only have so much money. But I did make a stack of flyers of 10 for all of the Alder people to post. If you don't think that you are gonna be posting them, please give them back so I can post them myself or have other community members do, 'cause I don't want them to go to waste. We need to find Jeriah. Her little sister is missing her. Her mother is missing her. Jeriah, if you happen to hear this, please come home. Thank you. And I would like to end this with, I would, I really hope this reaches more people, like I was hoping, because I feel like all these people already knew. So, thank you. I hope you post those, and if you don't, please give them back to me. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you. I, I just wanna let you know, I, I actually got a message while Mr. Pasha was speaking. I have residents who are watching the meeting right now. So, so it is at least, I think, probably on Channel 22, if not streaming. I don't know which way they, which venue they watch on, but you were being broadcast, and thank you for these.
Thank you, Alderwoman.
Thanks, mayor.
James, do you come in?
Yes, sir.
You're next.
Oh, your eyes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go real fast. It's been a while, and there's a lot of people asking, like, where I've been. So there's a lot of stuff I need to hit real quick. First of all, I'm gonna say, Emma Remmers, Sonia Massey, Vikings, Tanyus. I also wanna say thank you to the state police for solving one of our unsolved crimes over there on east side. Now I'm gonna ask that SPD pick up the pace and try to get some of these unsolved murders solved. And there's a young lady who was killed, and we haven't heard much about it, and so I'm gonna put it out there to SPD and state's attorney that we would like to hear what's going on with that before I speak on it anymore. But I'm gonna have that same fire about that young lady as if it was Sonia Massey, because it has to stop. And I'm gonna show that same energy, and I'm asking everybody else to show that same energy. It doesn't matter who does it. We need to show that same energy. Now moving on, let's talk about downtown, because that's been a lot of discussion in the past when I haven't been here. So let me give y'all a little history about downtown, 'cause a lot of y'all are new. And I don't know how long you've been around Springfield, but here's what I wanna say about downtown. We had the feed store, President Obama favorite. We had a Walgreens, gone. We had a Hardee's, it's gone. We had a McDonald's. Redpath might remember that. He been around a long enough. He probably even worked there. And if McDonald leaves... You mean, repeat that. If McDonald doesn't sustain and stay in a location, that should tell you something. How many McDonald's you seen close and, and move? And I'm gonna name one more, but it's not downtown. It's over in... Carson, one of y'all ward?
Mine.
MacArthur. That's the only other McDonald that has ever closed in this community. And look what's happening to that area. It's going down. Downtown would never go back to where it used to be. And I'm gonna give you one of the reasons why, and until you solve that, that's gonna just be one. Now, I have some other reasons too, but you're gonna have to come and see me personally, and I'll tell you about that one, 'cause I'm not gonna say it on the mic, but there's some reasons. But you gotta get some parking downtown. And if you don't have no parking downtown, ain't nobody coming. Downtown ain't gonna never be the same. It ain't gonna revive, 'cause people don't have nowhere to park. We ain't got rid of Lincoln Fest, Black, White, and Blues. Like, all the things that we used to do downtown and have downtown, it's no longer. So everybody talking and fussing, and would like to see it revived and come back. Until we do that, it's not gonna come back. Now, moving from now on, I wanna go to this Robin Roberts. Mayor, I'm gonna suggest that you guys give that to them owners, because the Park District ain't doing nothing with that place in the first place. And here's why I'm gonna say, or here, I'm gonna just give my advice on. We should sell it to them for whatever they want it for, and let them do it. And then across the street with all that vacant lot, let them pit parking spaces there so they don't have to share with the high school. And hopefully, the owners there will bring in a lot more activities to that area. Now, I haven't heard all the ideals, but I think they might be on to something and some good ideals, because other than baseball, what are they doing with that park? It's another failure area until somebody comes in with some great ideals and do something. So that's just my opinion, that I think the city should, like, go ahead and give that individual and let him do something. 'Cause if he's gonna go outside of baseball, I think that would bring that area back. Now, the last thing I wanna bring up is for my Ward 2, Ward 3, and Ward 5, you know. Minority caucus. So can you tell us, and the people who, like myself, questioning, like, when do y'all meet? What are you discussing? And when are, when is the communities gonna be invited to a minority caucus meeting? And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, one more thing. Can somebody tell us what happened with the Wyndham?
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Clerk, who's next?
Aaron Cahill. Good evening, members of the council, mayor, and community members. My name's Aaron Cahill. And I'm not here to you, I'm, I'm here tonight, not just as a concerned citizen, but as the spouse of a mental health professional and an advocate for the youth. We're in the midst of a mental health crisis. And while this is not new, recent developments threaten to expose the fragility of our already overwhelmed system in even more dangerous ways. I'm referring to specific, referring specifically to the implementation of mandatory, the offering of mandatory mental health screenings in our public schools. of mandatory mental health screenings in our public schools. While the intention behind these is good, nay, they're great. Early indication, early identification, support, and intervention is needed. The reality is far more complicated. We're shining light into darkness only to discover we have no infrastructure to address what we find. Right now, Springfield, in Springfield, we don't have enough school counselors, social workers, or licensed therapists. Our community clinics are underfunded, wait lists for therapy stretch months long, if not years. Families are forced to choose between rent and private care, and our crisis response systems, particularly for youth, are reactionary, not preventative. So what happens when we start screening thousands of students and identifying more needs than we can handle? We create a false hope. We increase suicidality of these kids. We tell children, you're not okay, and we know that, but then when we offer no viable path to healing, we inform parents that their child is struggling with anxiety, trauma, or suicidal ideation, leave them, but leave them to navigate a system full of dead ends, insurance gaps, and long wait lists. And we ask educators to carry that emotional burden without giving them any tools or backup. This is not preventative. This is exposure without support. And it's a recipe for harm. Let me be clear. My wife and I both support school-based mental health screening, when and only when. It is accompanied by funding, staffing, and infrastructure to do something about the results. Because otherwise, we're re-traumatizing an already vulnerable children. We're overwhelming and already burned, already burned-out educators and we're ignoring a community that has been crying out for resources long before this screening policy was even considered, let alone on the table. We cannot continue to take a Band-Aid approach, take Band-Aid approaches to hemorrhaging wounds. We need the council to demand real investment. Mental health professionals embedded in schools. I don't know if y'all are aware of this, but we have 18, 18 mental health professionals for the entire district of 186. That is 35 schools and over 9,000 students from grades K through 12. Almost 10,000 students that we're about to offer mental health screenings to with no support. Cool. You're suicidal. Good luck, kid. Hope mom put the knives away. The screening program will not be a success if we don't measure it by the kind, the number of kids identified, or if we measure it by the number of kids identified. It will only be success if those kids are seen, heard, and treated. So I ask you, what will you say to the student who bravely admits they're struggling? Only to be told, there's no one available to help them. Springfield can do better. Springfield should do better. Our kids deserve better and the time to act is now before crisis knocks on every classroom When we identify but fail to act on mental health emergencies and mental health crises, we are complicit in anything that occurs to those children. I'm a parent of two, now adults, and I struggled with the mental health crisis down in South Mississippi. It's not freaking fun, guys. It is horrible. It sucks knowing that your kid is suffering these issues. There ain't a damn thing you can do about it. What are you going to do?
Roy Walton. Roy Walton. Alice Ramey. Alice Ramey. Robert Fraser. Robert Fraser. Brianna Ilers.